Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
Good evening and welcome to the Burbank City Council meeting on Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. I would like to invite Mr. Bob Kramer, Community Assistant Coordinator, to lead us in the invocation and flag salute. Will everyone please stand and remain standing for the flag salute?
Thank you, let's pray. Lord, we thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, and we thank you for our great city, and we thank you for our citizens. We pray you always bless our city and protect our children. Amen. Will you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, would you please take the role?
Thank you. Councilmember Gabeletti, Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Talamantis, Vice Mayor Frutos.
Good evening.
Good evening. And Mayor Springer.
Here.
Noting the absence of Councilmember Gabeletti. Thank you.
We have three announcements this evening. The City of Burbank is excited to announce that we've partnered with the U.S. Census Bureau to support the 2020 Census on April 1st. The Census counts all people who reside in the United States regardless of age or citizenship. Your response will determine how much federal money Burbank will receive for education, housing, healthcare, and more. An invitation to complete your census questionnaire should arrive by mail in March. You can be counted by submitting your response online, by phone, or via mail. For more information, please visit 2020census.gov. The City of Burbank has been added to the California Earthquake Authority's Earthquake Brace and Bolts Program, allowing Burbank homeowners to receive up to $3,000 for the seismic retrofitting of their house. The application period is now open and will close on March 19th, 2020. To apply, please visit earthquakebracebolt.com. Residents may also contact the City Building and Safety Division at 818-238-5250. Madam City Clerk, will you please read the final announcement?
Thank you. The City Clerk's Office is currently accepting applications for an unexpired term on the Board of Library Trustee. The deadline to apply is Friday, February 28th at 5:00 p.m. For more information, please contact the City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851, or visit our website. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not have any notable items to report tonight.
Sure. We have a presentation that we will postpone because one of the key people is simply not here yet. At this time, I would like to ask our city attorney to please report on the closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Council met this evening in closed session on three existing litigation cases pursuant to Government Code Section 54, 956.9, subsection D1. One case was Ferguson versus City of Burbank, which was a workers' compensation matter. The second is Ellison versus the City of Burbank. This was a personal injury case. And Arius versus City of Burbank, also a personal injury case. Lastly, council met with their Labor Negotiator Management Services Director concerning International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers and Burbank Firefighters International Association.
Thank you. Now is the time for joint general public comment. Please present a completed yellow general public comment card to the City Clerk if you wish to speak. Any person speaking during general public comment may address the council on any matter concerning city business. Persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report but will not be able to speak on that item following this segment. Comments are limited to three minutes. In order to promote fairness, please stay within your maximum three minutes. A timer is available on the podium to help the speaker keep track of how much time is left. I encourage you to state your name when speaking at the podium to assist the City Clerk with the minutes. Our first speaker is Joel Schlossman.
Good evening, everybody. Ms. Mayor and Councilman Frutos, I got this flyer today. It has your picture on it, the both of you. Who is it that, who's this group that you're affiliated with out of Long Beach, and why are they trying to influence our election? Did you know that our, the school district asked the citizens of Burbank in 1997 to issue $112,500,000 in school improvement bonds, which we did? Some of those bonds will not be paid off until the year 2028. Again, in 2013, the school district asked us to approve Measure S, a $110 million school improvement bond that will not be paid off until the year 2032. We now owe $188,77,000 on these bonds. The school district is asking us at this time for another $109 million, which will take it to almost $300 million. Who, who did not endorse this measure? The Board of Realtors did not endorse it. The Chamber of Commerce did not endorse this measure. And even more telling, according to the LA Times, the LA Times itself did not endorse this measure. That is very telling. I ask each of you here at the dais, where is your compassion for people on a fixed income, our senior citizens who will end up paying more? It's, it's very troubling. Inflation is here. I ask you, why do we make it worse? With coronavirus, crazy stock market, I can tell you, people will be losing their homes. All for what? A group of people who already get over 17 weeks off per year. Imagine that, 17 weeks off. They have a wonderful retirement package and wonderful health benefits, but they still want more. The majority of this, 87%, is going for raises for employees and administrators. I'm voting no on this. New and unnecessary tax, and I urge you to do the same.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Kadama, followed by Molly Shore.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm here today, I'm the former Burrows Boys Soccer Coach. I worked there for 30 years. I'm here today to thank all of you for your proclamation and the kind words at the last City Council meeting. It means a tremendous amount to me and my family, and just to get the recognition from all of you. And I also want to thank you for your community service. People don't do that often enough. So again, thank you very much for all that you do for the City of Burbank. And from a personal, thank you for coming on out and sharing in the event with me. Much, much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Molly Shore.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'm Molly Shore, Burbank resident. I'm here this evening to voice my strong opposition to Measure I, a proposed local parcel tax benefiting the Burbank Unified School District. If it passes, Measure I would levy a special tax of 10 cents per square foot of improvements annually on each parcel of taxable real property in the district and would remain in effect for 12 years. What the proponents of this measure do not emphasize is that this tax includes commercial as well as residential properties. A landlord owning a commercial property that houses a business establishment will no doubt raise his rent to cover the additional tax, forcing the business owner in turn to raise his prices. In short, what it means is that we will all be paying more for almost everything we buy in Burbank, including groceries, gas, clothing, dining out, even your already overpriced morning café lattes. Business owners are in business to make a profit. If their expenses go up, their prices go up. And it's the people already struggling to keep a roof over their heads and food in their stomachs who can least afford another increase in prices. Even now, people in Burbank are paying more for everything because of the local sales tax increase that rose from 9.5% to 10.25% last April. Also, how can Burbank Unified School District justify asking for more money when its superintendent rakes in more than $330,000 annually in salary and benefits? California Governor Newsom, who earns the highest salary of any U.S. governor, does not make as much as this superintendent is making. It seems that whenever a public agency, be it county government, a municipality, or a school district overspends, thereby creating a budget deficit, its solution is to create new or additional taxes, and that is what is happening here. The school district does not need more money. It needs to responsibly budget the money it's been allotted and not burden the public with further taxation. Many of us have reached a financial breaking point. Finally, seniors 65 and older are told that if they own property, they are exempt from this tax. But what about seniors 65 and older who rent? If their landlord passes the tax increase onto them, they will have no choice but to pay. Measure I is a disaster, especially for the low-income wage earner and the retired senior citizen living on a fixed income, and its purported purpose to raise the standard of public education in Burbank is highly questionable. Basically, Measure I is meant to give raises to teachers who unfortunately cannot afford to live in Burbank. Should this measure pass, there will be even more people who won't be able to afford living here. To everyone who hasn't voted yet, vote no on Measure I. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any more comment cards? Thank you. Next, we have Mike Nolan.
Madam Mayor, Mike Nolan, members of the council. I had the pleasure of attending what has been called a charrettes at the library. What a waste of time. We already have two architects apparently on the payroll. I was a sidewalk superintendent on that building when it was built. I have a question for all four of you. However long you've lived in Burbank, it's certainly longer than our there burying. But how many people do you know still have the same tile in the bathroom that they had in 1962? How many people used Jill Hagerty or somebody else to put in copper plumbing since 1962? How many people used Sid Giddens or somebody like Sid to change their two-pronged outlets to three-pronged and they're grounded? This is what your library trustees were lamenting about to these architects. Come on! Most people have already redone their homes in Burbank over that period of time, or it was redone before they moved into it. Now, the question also came up about the little children coming up on the second floor, and about the mothers pushing strollers. When that building was built, the Americas with Disability Act hadn't been written yet. But in all that time since then, if there's been a problem with children getting up on the second floor, did you ever hear about it? Did a single citizen ever complain to one of you? You were on the council with the Boys and Girls Club and that. Now, if they need something done, Madam Mayor, members of the council, wouldn't it be cheaper to put in two brand-new elevators in the corners of the building than to build a new library, concrete, steel? That building was well-built. I know I was young when I was a sidewalk superintendent, but I had Monsieur Keating with me to point out any shortcomings. I cannot believe that we've reached that point in this city where we have now declared that that library is obsolete and has to be replaced. Wrong! We don't have the money.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any more comment cards?
No, we don't.
Thank you. Now is the time for a brief response from City Council, the City Manager, and/or the City Attorney. Any comments? Yes, Councilmember Talamantis.
I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight and sharing your concerns with us. Special comment to Coach Kadama. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication with all the, you know, the soccer teams, 30 years of service to John Burrows High School and all other kinds of clubs, AYSO as well. So it's been nice knowing you for all those years, and congratulations on retirement.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. It's very important, your comments, we consider them. And now, tonight, we have a presentation regarding the 2020 election and the Voting Solutions for All People Project. I would like to invite our City Clerk, Mrs. Zett Mullins, to please introduce the next speaker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. As part of our ongoing voter education and outreach, we have been working very close with the County Los Angeles Register Office on educating our community and making sure material and information is available for the voters for the 2020 primary election. A lot of the information have been posted on the City Clerk's webpage for voters to be able to access the information, whether it's to find out where the current locations are for the Vote Center, or how to reach the County of Los Angeles through the lavote.net website. We have invited Jeff Klein. He is the manager of Voter Education Outreach with the County Register Office, and he's going to provide us some additional information about the Vote Centers. So right now, I'd like to invite Jeff to the podium.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time and having me here tonight. I do have a presentation, if we could go ahead and bring that up. And yes, there's the, the title of the project is, as mentioned, Voting Solutions for All People. We call it VSAP for short, and it is the voting system that we'll be using beginning this election and moving forward into the future. It's, these presentations and the partnerships that we have with cities such as Burbank are really important because with as many people as we have in LA County, it's, these are crucial ways that we try to get the information out into the community, and we look to partner. And I do want to say before I get going, any opportunities to partner in the future, you know, whether it's around the primary or moving to the general election, we're always happy to work with the city and get that information out. So the, as mentioned, we do try to partner with cities. We also try to partner with community stakeholders. We've done about close to 500 presentations based on VSAP and providing demonstrations and hands-on experience. And these are 500 by request, so if there's any stakeholders or organizations within your city that you would like for us to connect with, we're always available, and we're always willing to connect with organizations and get the information out. So the New Voter Experience, which is currently underway here in LA County, we started on Saturday, the 22nd, and voting will continue all the way through March 3rd, which is Election Day. We do want to encourage folks, if they're ready to cast their ballot, we're always encouraging folks to go out prior to Election Day, but of course, if individuals want to wait until Election Day and cast their ballot, then they're more than welcome to do that as well. The New Voter Experience, just to highlight a number of the big changes, we have the electronic poll book. So that replaces really the paper roster. It's no longer a precinct-based voting system anymore. So the electronic poll book allows us to look up a voter anywhere they go in LA County. We opened up about 230 locations around LA County this weekend, and there'll be close to 1,000 locations for the last four days of the election. So that's this coming Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and Election Day, March 3rd. So the electronic poll book allows us to look up voters, mark them as voted real-time, and really gives voters the opportunity to vote where they want, when they want, a lot more options and a lot more availability in order to cast your ballot. We can also offer something called Conditional Voter Registration. Since the voter registration deadline has passed, voters can still participate in the election if they haven't registered. They would do the Conditional Voter Registration process, and you can also change your address, change your party affiliation, but anything you can do with the voter registration process, you can now do in-person up to and on Election Day, and your ballot will count for the election. Also with the electronic poll book, we, it allows us to maintain the records for the election a lot better. We mark voters as voted real-time, and we can also do things like cancel a voter's vote-by-mail ballot. So if a voter hasn't sent it in, they show up and they want to vote in-person, we can go ahead and cancel their vote-by-mail ballot and give them a in-person ballot where they can cast that, they won't have to vote provisionally. That wasn't the case in the past. Previously, you had to vote provisionally, but in this case, we can go into our voter database and cancel it. Also with the electronic poll book, it allows us to maintain records better and allows us to maintain the integrity of the election moving forward. So on the administrative side, and I think this is something that cities are interested in because information and breakdown of information is always important commodity that cities are interested in. Moving on to the modern tally system, the one thing I'd like to stress about the modern tally system is we have a new tally facility in Downey. It is something that the public can come out and they can observe the process and how we tally the votes. It's a lot more on the administrative side. It improves how we audit the election, improves how we conduct things like recounts. But one reason I like to mention it in this presentation is to emphasize that it is a paper-based ballot. This voting system is paper-based. It is not electronic voting. It is not conditional, computerized voting. As you can see, there's a picture of our ballot marking device, and sometimes people do mistake it for electronic voting because you can see a tablet attached to it, but it is a paper ballot, and voters have been receiving those when they check in to cast their ballot in person. The Interactive Sample Ballot, it's an optional service. Currently, everyone receives their paper sample ballot by mail, or they might have gotten a static PDF in the past. So if you do want to have an electronic version of your sample ballot, you go on and use our Interactive Sample Ballot feature, which is found on our website. You make all your selections ahead of time on your mobile device or on a computer. You generate a barcode called a Poll Pass. It looks like a very fancy boarding pass essentially. So you could keep that on your mobile device, or you could print it out. When you go to the Vote Center and you check in, you get your paper ballot, you would then scan that barcode and scan the Poll Pass, and it instantly transfers your selections over to the ballot marking device. It's not your vote. You still have to review your ballot, print it, and then cast your ballot, but it does allow for an expedited process for voters because the ballots are very long, and we wanted to create a little more of a, a quicker process if voters didn't have a lot of time to go in because the ballots can be extremely long. So again, it is optional, but it is something that a lot of voters have been using, and they find it pretty valuable. You, I'm sure, are aware that this is the first election where most cities have consolidated with the long presidential or the, and in two years, there'll be the governor's ballot. So we wanted to create a process that is convenient for voters. Moving on to the ballot marking device, there's a picture of it there from the top down. You make your selections with you, by touching the touchscreen, and it prints directly onto the ballot. So again, it is a paper ballot. There are, there's no internet connection, there's no Wi-Fi, there's no Bluetooth, so it cannot be hacked, and that is a concern that people have raised. It is completely standalone. It simply plugs into the, a power source. It has an audio feature, so if someone would like to hear their ballot, if they're visually impaired, for example, they have the option to do that. Also, you can get your ballot in any language that we serve voters in LA County, so it has English plus 12 languages, and those are programmed into the device as well. So whether you want your ballot in Spanish, or Chinese, or Vietnamese, or Armenian, or Farsi, or any of the other languages that we serve voters, you can go ahead and get your ballot translated right there on the screen itself. When you cast your ballot, it goes directly into the ballot marking device. There is a ballot box attached to the back of it, and I have a picture later in the presentation that will show that. It's fully accessible. You can even plug in your own accessibility device. If you have a SIPUFT device, you can plug that in, and you can vote your ballot using your accessibility device. The voting period in Vote Centers, so this is probably the most significant change about the election. So now voters have 11 days. We're in the middle of that voting period currently. So we have 11 days where voters can cast their ballot. Again, we opened about 230 Vote Centers over the weekend around the county, and for the last four days, it'll be close to 1,000 locations. So these voters can go anywhere. We want to stress that you don't have to stay within your city, although a lot of voters may find the Vote Centers within their city or at least near their neighborhood to be more convenient, but we wanted to give that, we wanted to have this model as an option. Because we are such a mobile society in Los Angeles, we want voters to be able to go anywhere in LA County. All the Vote Centers are fully staffed, they're fully accessible, and things like proximity to public transportation and ADA features, those are something we took into account when assessing the different facilities. And the last bullet point I want to mention up there is the New Vote-by-Mail Ballot. It's actually, it changed in 2018, so the ballot isn't necessarily new. It's fairly new. You mark directly on the ballot itself. No longer do you have the little Scantron where you have to transfer the number from the booklet over to the little Scantron card. Now you just mark directly on the ballot itself. What is new for this election is we have about 200 vote-by-mail Dropbox locations where voters can drop off their vote-by-mail ballot. So voters have three ways to return their ballot. The Dropbox, you can return by mail, it's all postage-paid, or you can walk it into any Vote Center, and you can do that all up through to Election Day. So I have a video that'll summarize everything.
The election is just around the corner, and Los Angeles County has a new way for voters to make their voices heard. New Los Angeles County Vote Centers are located throughout the county. Cast your ballot near your home, work, or favorite park. Voters can go anywhere. To find a Vote Center that's convenient, visit lavote.net and find one that works best for you. Instead of waiting for one day to vote, you are now able to vote across 11 days. Once you've arrived, a Vote Center assistant will greet you and check you in before taking you to the ballot marking device. Did you know that there is a new interactive sample ballot that lets you pre-mark your selections online and generate a Poll Pass? A unique QR code that will let you quickly transfer, review, and cast your selections on a paper ballot at the County Vote Center. The new ballot marking device includes an audio ballot, a touchscreen, and a tactile keypad to make voting faster and more accessible. You can also select your language, change the font size, and adjust the contrast for easy viewing. Then, after you make your selections or scan your Poll Pass, you can review your ballot to verify your choices and cast your ballot by feeding the paper ballot back into the ballot marking device. There's no need to give your ballot to a Vote Center assistant. You cast it on the same device. Welcome to the future of voting in Los Angeles County. Fast, convenient, and easy. Go to vsap.lavote.net to exercise your right to vote and let your voice be heard.
All right, so just a few more slides, and then I'm happy to answer any questions. So there's the picture of our vote-by-mail ballot, if you haven't seen what it looks like. Again, you mark directly on the ballot itself, and again, there's three ways to return your vote. vote-by-mail ballot. Either at a vote-by-mail Dropbox location, and the lookup tool for the Dropbox is on our website, there's approximately 200 of them around LA County. Return it by mail, postage-paid, or you can walk it into a vote center. Speaking of vote centers, there's a picture on the left is the layout of a typical vote center. We have three sizes of vote centers, we have the small, medium, and large. Large have about 50 ballot marking devices, the medium have about 25 to 30, and small have about 10 to 15 ballot marking devices. As you can see in the illustration, it'll be fully staffed, so it'll be there to greet you, to check you in, guide you over to the ballot marking device, and if you need assistance with getting started on the ballot marking device, the vote center staff are trained on how to do that. On the right is something we like to highlight, is we have three mobile vote centers, and those are vote centers that will be in different locations for one day. They'll be there in basically large population centers where a lot of people are showing up. So for example, I don't remember the ones in this specific area, but a large farmer's market where thousands of people show up maybe on a Sunday, we'll have a mobile vote center there. So we're really trying to take the election to where people are and take advantage of large population centers. I think LA Live, for example, would be a place where we would have a mobile vote center. And then also, in addition, they're also useful to offset areas where maybe we weren't able to find a vote center, but we wanted to have accessibility. So there's the downtown women's center, where we can have it close to maybe voters who experience homelessness, give those voters an opportunity to vote and make it convenient for voters who aren't quite as mobile to get around the county. A little bit on why people don't vote. So this project has been going on for 10 years. We started in 2009, working on changing the voting model, working on changing our voting system, and we recently asked voters, why didn't you vote? And so I don't think any of these reasons are going to be a surprise to anyone, but the number one reason people said was they were too busy on Election Day. As you work your way down the list, people said the election wasn't important, or they forgot about the election, they were unable to get off work, and so on and so forth. Under the vote center model, all these reasons go away, except maybe the second reason, which is whether or not the election is important to someone. Because now, if you're too busy on Election Day, you can vote on the weekend, or you could vote the week before. If you forgot about the election, well, you're going to be hearing about it over 11 days. Unable to get off work in time, let's say you're leaving your work at 7:00 PM or 7:30, you could vote at the vote center by your work on Election Day, or maybe during the week, right after work, maybe at 5:00 or 6:00. So a lot of options where people, to bring the election to the people, a lot more flexible way of running an election. On the right are the locations that people have said where they would like a vote center, and we've targeted a lot of these locations to make it convenient for voters. Interactive sample ballot, just a couple more points about that. As you can see, you mark your selections on your mobile device, or you can make them on your home computer, and then you generate the poll pass. As you can see, the person on the home computer, they printed out the poll pass. You take that into the vote center, after you get your ballot and you insert it, you're going to scan the poll pass and it instantly transfers your selections. The ballot marking device, as I mentioned, a number of main talking points about it, which we like to emphasize, you know, how there's no internet connection, those, you know, making sure people know that it's a secure device, and part of that security is making sure that the ballots come back to our office every night. So on the left there, you see a picture of the ballot box attached to the ballot marking device. That gets detached and they're brought back to our office every night, so we're not leaving ballots unattended overnight. In the middle, you can see the legs are wider, this allows someone in a wheelchair to get up close and use the ballot marking device, and on the right, you can see the paper sticking out of the ballot marking device. It's a very intuitive device, regardless of your age, you're able to use the ballot marking device, it's been tested with over 5,000 individuals. These are pictures from our mock election we did last September. So whether or not you're five, and we're not going to let five-year-olds vote in this election, but during the mock election, we had all ages come out. So people came out with their families, so if you're, whether you're five or you're at the other end of the age spectrum, you can go ahead and use the ballot marking device, it's very easy to use. And then talking about the accessibility, you can see someone there on the left using the audio feature. In the middle, someone is using it. The great thing about this ballot marking device is you can decide whether or not you need the accessibility features. You don't have to let a vote center worker know that you need one feature or another, it's completely up to the voter and completely within their control. And on the right there, you could see someone in a wheelchair getting up close to the ballot marking device. So I have a video here that shows just how to use it, and I'll narrate it since the video is, there's no sound with it. Oh, it might have music, actually. So you press the button to start, you choose your language, and you get your paper ballot, you'll insert your paper ballot, that's what you received when you checked in. And you either make your selections by hand, or you have the poll pass. So in this case, they didn't have the poll pass, so they would just make their selections by touching the screen. Now, if you did have the poll pass, you would get all your selections in there, then you could go back and make any changes you wanted to make. Make all your selections. Now you can vote for as much or as little as you want, it's really up to the voter. And then you have a screen to review your selections. As you go through it, it'll be grayed out if you didn't vote for something, so it'll let you know. And then you're going to go ahead and print your ballot. And then you have a second option to review. So the printed ballot is what we call a human readable ballot, you can read your selections right there, and if you suddenly realized you made a mistake, if you didn't catch it on the screen, you could actually take the paper back to the table, we'll give you a new ballot. But assuming everything looks good, you hit cast and it goes back into the ballot marking device. Pretty easy, pretty straightforward, it's actually, we've gotten a lot of really great feedback already the last few days, people have really enjoyed using the ballot marking device. Okay, I think I've, oops. There we go. Again, this is the last slide, I just want to show the flow chart. One of the big, I don't think it's a criticism, just points people make is that they feel like we're changing so much that they're not going to know even how to vote anymore. Our current system is 50 years old, so there is a lot of change. But what we're not changing is the process, we're changing how you interact with that process. So what do I mean by that? Well, step one, you have to arrive at a vote center, just like before you arrived at a polling place. Step two, you check in, you get checked in, before someone checked you in on the paper roster, now it's someone checking in on an electronic roster. You get your paper ballot, just like before, you go over to the ballot marking device and you insert your paper ballot, just like before, it's just a different type of ballot marking device. Then you make your selections, either you have your poll pass to scan, or you make your selections by touching the screen. You're going to review, print, cast your ballot, and then you get your "I voted" sticker. And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. What I'd like to put on the screen really quick is the actual locations of the drop-off by mail locations. So for those that receive their ballot by mail, they can drop it off at any of those locations, Buena Vista Library, Central Library, and Burbank Northwest Library. And then right below it is the 11-day vote center. As Jeff has indicated earlier, we have one at the Buena Vista Library. And then on to the last page, these are the locations for the four-day vote centers along with the March 3rd election. So all these centers will be open starting on February 29th through the election. So all this information is on the website, and if anyone has any questions, they can contact the office at 818-238-5851. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you. Item number one, approval of right-of-entry license agreement between the City of Burbank and the Providence-St. Joseph Foundation for Downtown Farmer's Market. And, that's it. That's the only one item on the agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second?
Sure.
My question is, how much money does the farmer's market make over the years? Does anybody keep track of the monies? It's been, what, since 1983? So 37 years? And it says also that obviously they help out with transfer card or food stamp, or they accept food stamps and things like that.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council, Mary Hemzoya and Community Development Department. We do not keep track of the profits that are made by the farmer's market. I know that the farmer's market does collect those funds through the Providence Foundation, and they do help the needy at the hospital, so we don't keep track of any of their funds.
Do they keep track of any of their funds?
Yes, they do.
You do?
But we've never seen any of their information, we've never requested it.
I'd just be interested to find out if, how much more they're making now than maybe in 83 when they started, over the years, and how much is donated to various other organizations, or the foundation, and where it goes to. I'm not questioning the use of it, I'm just questioning what it's used for and how much monies have been gathered over the years.
Sure. We have some representatives here from the farmer's market and the Providence Foundation, but I'm not sure if they have that information with them.
It's donated to the foundation so that some people can get medical care that they can't afford. They pay some limited overhead, and the rest of it's donated.
The rest of it?
Yes. Most of it is donated. I used to be on the board, but I'm no longer on the board, and I would say that most of it is...
You know, over the years, I've always thought about that farmer's market, to be very honest with you, that maybe some of those revenues that are raised there should be shared with some of the nonprofits in the city. And I know the foundation does very good work, but so do other nonprofits in the city do very good work. They're always looking for monies to be, obviously, any monies that they can use that the other nonprofits are, well, obviously, always well-received.
So we can send a memo to the city manager and distribute to the city council regarding information from Providence Foundation and how much money they originally made and how much they're making now.
Great, excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure, thank you.
Okay.
Will the city clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Telemontes? Vice Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have three reports to council. After staff's presentation, the city council will proceed with public comment. Please fill out a yellow general comment card and hand it to the city clerk. Speakers will have three minutes to speak on the item at the conclusion of the presentation, as long as the speaker has not spoken on the item during the first period of public Our first report tonight is for the adoption of a resolution approving a funding agreement between the City of Burbank and Metro to design and construct the Chandler Bike Way Extension Project and to authorize the Community Development Director to execute agreements. Will Mr. David Criskey, Assistant Community Development Director, please present the report?
Good evening, mayor members and members of the city council. My name is David Criskey, and I'm with the Community Development Department. And tonight, you're being asked to do two things. You're asked, being asked to adopt a resolution approving a funding agreement between the City of Burbank and Metro to design and construct the Chandler Bike Way Extension Project, and you're authorizing the CD Director to execute future agreements to proceed with this project. Tonight, I'd like to give you a little bit of background on the project and to talk about our plans for the improvements. Excuse me. Yes. And this is my worst nightmare.
Want some water? I haven't, I haven't used it yet.
No, no, I'm fine, thank you. So staff is very excited about this project, it's an improvement to our Bicycle Master Plan that is a long time in the making, and we're excited to finally get started to bring this improvement to the City of Burbank. The Chandler Bike Way Extension, as you can see on the map, is part of the city's 8-to-80 network. The 8-to-80 bicycle network is a network of bike facilities that allows someone as young as age eight to as old as age 80 to feel safe and secure when traveling through the city. As you know, the Chandler Bike Way has ended at Mariposa Street for many, many years, and the reason for that is because the rail spur immediately east of that location is still used by railroad operations. Staff has been working in design and through feasibility studies to see how to extend that project further east to eventually connect to the MetroLink station. Staff has a new proposal and funding that we'd ask you to prove tonight that would allow us to extend the project further east in a portion of the railroad right-of-way, and then use new facilities on the street that are protected and fully separated from traffic to get around the rail spur and get us into the MetroLink station. And the project alignment map that you see on your map shows how we plan to do that. We would extend the Class 1 bike path that goes along Chandler today, eastward about 2/3 of the way to Victory Boulevard, and then we would get onto the street, either Chandler Boulevard, Victory Boulevard, and Cypress Avenue to connect further east around the rail spur, getting to the Burbank Western Channel, where we have another project planned to extend a Class 1 bike path to the MetroLink station. Why are we asking for this improvement? It completes the remaining half-mile segment of the Chandler Bike Way. It extends multimodal connectivity to the downtown Burbank MetroLink station, and it closes an existing gap in the LA County's regional bike network. You saw these remaining gaps when we brought for you for construction the Burbank Channel Bike Path, and saw that there's a few critical paths left to get a full facility all the way from Chatsworth to downtown Los Angeles. We have some lofty project goals for this project. As I said, it completes the existing bike way network gap, it improves mobility for all ages, and we build better neighborhoods with this project. This is probably when asking our residents about what improvements they want to see in terms of bike and pedestrian access. As long as I've worked here, the Chandler Bike Way is at the top of the list for extending that facility to other areas of the city. You're very well aware of the existing conditions on Chandler today. This is a shot of the existing rail spur that's out there now. The rails actually go all the way to Mariposa, but they're only used about 1/3 of the way, and there's an endpoint where the trains do not travel further. This project would landscape and improve the rest of that portion of the right-of-way. That's also the part that's in front of the multifamily residences along Chandler. And then we would move into Chandler Boulevard itself in a protected bike way so that we can avoid dealing with the railroads that still use the spur. This is now looking eastward. This part unfortunately would remain as-is because the freight operators still claim to use this area for their operations. You have taken some steps over the years to move this project forward, and I just wanted to outline what we've done to date. Back in 2013, the city council earmarked a small amount of money to close the gap in the Chandler Bike Way, and we use this money, seed money, to do some right-of-way research and develop some conceptual bike way alignments. This led us to apply for a Metro grant in 2013 for a bulk of the costs, 80% of the costs, and we were awarded a $2.6 million call for projects grant, which is the subject of tonight's funding agreement approval. And then for the local match, we're not even using local funds for the local match, we're using, proposing to use Measure R Highway Operations Funding, which can be used, some of it for bike and ped. To give you an idea of the project budget, we have estimated about $570,000 for planning, design, and engineering and construction of about $2.7 million for a total budget of $3.3 million. And as I said, 80% of that is the grant, and 20% of that is the Measure R Highway money, which is also kind of like a grant. And the council's already budgeted funds to front some of those design costs with prior budgets, and so you're not being asked to do any budget amendments at this time. If you would like us to proceed with this project, we've got some forecast of next coming, upcoming milestones. We have project initiation and consultant selection in September 20. If you were to prove this tonight, we have to use federal procedures, because this is federal money, to procure for consultants, so that takes some time. But we hope to have the consultant on board later this year. We think that design will take about 18 months, and then construction in April of 2022, and we're projecting a long construction time, just because of the complexities of this project and the fact that the Burbank Channel Bike Way has taken... this project and the fact that the Burbank Channel Bike Way has taken, it'll be a little over a year. We have a, kind of a broad period for that and that includes also the going out to bid, doing all of the, the federal paperwork with that, that's required for that. So again, in summary, we're asking you tonight to adopt a resolution approving the funding agreement between the city and Metro to design the Bike Way, design and construct the Bike Way Extension Project and asking you to authorize our CD Director to execute further funding agreements with Caltrans or Metro to, to keep those funds moving so that we can begin the design process. And then again, the next step to come back to you would be to approve a final alignment and environmental review. That's what we did for the Burbank Channel Bike Way. We had you weigh in on our final alignment at about a thirty percent design level. We will also have been doing, doing public outreach to, to help the public understand what we're doing and we'd come back to you early next year with a proposal to proceed forward with the final alignment. And that concludes my winded presentation and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to public comment and I have one comment card from Mike Hollis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. Hess and staff. My name is Mike Hollis and I'm here tonight representing Walkbike Burbank. As you know, Walkbike Burbank is a local chapter of the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition. It's really exciting to hear the report from Mr. Criskie. I can obviously tell he's excited about it and Walkbike Burbank is definitely excited about this project as well. Probably one of, in the almost six years that we've been around now, it's probably one of the things that gets asked of us most often, when are we going to see this? There are a couple of other popular things that get asked, but this Chandler Extension is a question in, on every cyclist's mind. I fully, we fully agree with all of the benefits that have been laid out by the staff report. The, there is so many benefits to the community related to health benefits, to traffic benefits, to all of these things that we know cycling helps improve in our community and this connecting to the downtown MetroLink station provides a vital transit connection as well, where we allow people to use the, use MetroLink in a multimodal way, getting there by bicycle instead of driving there to the station. It, combine that with the construction that's now underway on Phase Two of the Channel Bike Way and we are now looking at a, a bike system that could run through Burbank from the North Hollywood border to the Glendale border with a minimum of street crossings. That's safer for cyclists, it's safer for, for auto drivers as well. In going over the proposed alignment in the staff report, the steering committee of Walkbike Burbank had one question that we'd like to understand a little better and that is why the path is, the Bike Way is being put on the side of Victory Boulevard that it is, what I would call the west side, where it runs along many entrances to a large parking lot that is very active. And then we're also having to add another traffic signal so we can then get across on the Bike Way over to the other side of Victory, when there already is a light at Chandler. So those are my, those are the questions that we have, but in general, we fully support this project. We hope that you will too. We understand that there's a lot of process that goes on and we, and we will be there to help add our input all along the way. We would love to see whatever we can do in the city of Burbank to expedite this project though and make it move a little faster than four and a half years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Criskie, could you please respond?
Yes, I'd be happy to. That's actually a good question and part of the, if you ask us to move forward with this money and then also with the design, we would work out those details. It's a bit of an open question on how, which side of the street we would take the path on for, on Victory. There's good cases for both. There are a lot of driveways on the, on the shopping center side. There are other driveways on the, on the, on the far side, on the east side, and there's parking on that side, whereas the shopping center side has a lot of red curb. And there may be a third option where we actually, rather than have the entire facility on one side or the other, that stretch of roadway may have a protected bike lane that's more traditional where southbound is on the southbound side of the street and northbound is on the northbound side of the street. We want to vet those options out before moving forward, but the, Mr. Hollis brings up a good point, there's some trade-offs on both sides. Also, the reason for the signal crossing at Cypress is the signal at Chandler still has the railroad involved with it and I just have a sneaky suspicion that we probably don't want to touch that signal or, or modify it in a very minimal way because that, that crossing, as you know, doesn't have gates, it doesn't have this, the new standard of, of full complement of improvements and you may not need it there because it's such, so infrequently used, but if we do too much work there, we may have to do further upgrades to the crossing and so our thought is maybe to keep it away from the crossing. But these are all issues that we'll talk about and vet through the design process and come back to you with the final alignment before we move forward. But we'll definitely keep those comments under advisement as we move forward in the process.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Yes, Councilmember Telemontes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Criskie. I have a question in regards to the, the almost $1 million that were funded for planning, design and engineering. Is that reimbursable?
Yes, so eighty percent of those costs are reimbursable by the funding agreement that you would approve tonight and then the twenty percent would be reimbursable through the Measure R Highway.
So all those close to 985,000 is coming back?
Yes, yes, we're just using our local funds as a bank to-
Where is that going to?
The, the-
The 985?
The local money?
Right.
Uh, it would go back into our impact fee account, so we're using our impact fees to front these costs and, and we would put those back into that same account to be used for other transportation projects on our impact fee program.
What percentages do they, do we receive back as the project moves forward?
Um, so usually the projects are billed incrementally or reimbursed incrementally, so we first, we get permission to get reimbursement by phase, so first we'll get from Caltrans a, a permission to reimburse for the design costs. Then after that, we will seek permission to go after any cost for right-of-way, which there really aren't because this is mostly all, it's all public facilities. And then we move to construction, we ask once again for reimbursement for the construction phase. And then what happens is usually quarterly or so, as the project's moving forward, we gather up all of our expenses and we submit that to Caltrans and then they reimburse us on the, on the, on the split, the eighty-twenty. In this case, we'll also send it to Metro and they'll give us a twenty percent.
Okay, good. This is one, this one project that I've been asking about for fifteen years. Yes, fifteen years. When I was on the Parks and Rec Board, I said, what can we do to extend that, the Bike Way? You know, it's gotta be, we gotta finish it. And we had the same problem where the railroad doesn't want to give it up because they say they still use it once a year or something. They don't give us a specific time they use, but they tell us they use it. So it's unfortunate that we can't, that would be ideal. I mean, that would be the ideal Bike Way, instead of putting people out on the streets, which I dislike. But if it's protected, I'd like to see that on the, on the opposite side, as it was mentioned. You can, because you say that most of the side of Victory of the shopping center is red. Let's make that parking and let's red the other side. I mean, we're just trying to have one red for another side, right? And I think it would be ideal to put the bikers across the street there, at Chandler, once we find out the pros and cons to what do we have to do and how much it's going to cost to create a, a crossing at the other intersection. So once we weigh those pros and cons, I think, I, I would rather see it stay there at Chandler and Victory for the crossing and move the bike, Bike Lane on that side as well. Just, it just, you know, it just seems to me that it's a lot safer, but that's my opinion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I just-
Yes, Councilmember Murphy?
Mr. Criskie, looking at the, the map on the back of your handup, is there thinking that alignment alternate number one or number two would tie into the Front Street project at any point?
So, the, the red portion of, on that map where it shows alignment one and two-
Right.
Would actually tie into the Burbank Channel Bike Way-
Okay.
-which was under construction now. There'd actually, I mean, we have the station in between, but then we'd want to have seamless connection to that facility. The first, or the Front Street project that you approved has facilities along Front Street, is on the other side of the tracks. Yes, you could cross at the station and then get onto that facility. So that's the, kind of the dream for this, is if you're going from Chandler to downtown, you would get into the station and then use the facilities we have planned on Front Street to get downtown, or if you were coming from Chandler and wanted to go to the LA River, you would stay on this side of the tracks and go down the new Bike Path that's under construction now.
Thank you.
And I will add, just as a minor note, the reason that is in red is because, and I didn't mention this in the presentation, this ties into our other project is the San Fernando Bike Way, which is a Class One separated path that goes along Victory Place in San Fernando that this project ties into. You have a grant and have already given us permission and we've been working on that project. We're actually in delay because of our favorite Interstate Five project and so we put all that on hold while, the San Fernando on hold while Interstate Five is being worked on. That's wrapping up and so now we're able to resume work on San Fernando, which gets us the last segment. So these projects are two projects, but seamlessly there'll be one when it's done.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Frutos?
Go ahead.
Oh, I, can you please tell us how the Bike Way might look, say on Chandler to Victory and how it would look on Victory and then on Cypress? And I know it's not designed yet, but-
Yes, we can, generally though, our thought is, so from Mariposa to basically Glen, parallel to where Glenwood would be if it went all the way to Chandler, like two-thirds of the way to Victory, the Bike Path would look just like the Chandler Bike Way. So it would be landscaped, we'd have trees, we would have the Bike Path in the center. It's important because that's where we still have residential frontage on Chandler and so they'll, those residents will look out at something nice and the cyclists will be able to ride in something that's pleasant. Then you will cross Chandler at a controlled crossing, not a signal, but a, a protected, safe crossing and you'd get onto a two-way Bike Path that looks like Chandler, but it's more constrained, it's separated from the cars with a, up on the, on the curb and then you'd have the sidewalk next to you. This stretch is probably the most constrained portion just because the right-of-way is narrower, but you'd still have a Chandler-like experience, just maybe not with as much landscaping, maybe some street trees, but that would be about it. Then you get to Victory and it would look like a, basically part of the wide sidewalk would include the, the Bike Way and you'd have a more urban situation in something that you see in other cities like Seattle where you have the vehicle traffic, you have a buffer and then you have the Bike Path and then you have trees and then you have the sidewalk area, which is going to be pretty wide there because Victory has pretty ample sidewalks. And then when you get to Cypress, it'll kind of look like the Chandler portion in the street, so you're going to, again, be a little bit constrained, Bike Path like Chandler with physical separation from this, from the, from the traffic next to the right-of-way. And then when you get into the channel right-of-way, it'll look just like what we're building on Burbank Channel Bike Way. So you'll have a twelve-foot Bike Path within about a twenty-five-foot Channel County right-of-way and we may have the opportunity to do some landscaping, just like we're doing on, on Burbank Channel. So each segment is going to look different because we're trying to thread our way through different rights-of-way and we're trying to get around this freight spur, which I share, Councilmember Telemontes, regret that we can't do a nice clean sweep right in, but we, we were working on that for so long that at one point, it's almost like, this isn't going to work, we're going to get this in 2050, maybe we can build the imperfect, the, you know, the enemy of the perfect, or I'm sorry, the enemy of the good is the perfect, I probably have that switched around, but maybe we get eighty percent good project, but at least we'll get something. And this connection is so important, we thought maybe we would, we would just proceed with this alternative. You never know what happened, what will happen to the freight spur in the future. If it ever becomes abandoned, well, then we come back and we do the clean sweep right, right to the channel, but at least we have a good connection now that gets folks to the station and to downtown.
So on Victory, do you widen the sidewalk for the bicycles or do you use part of the existing sidewalk?
We would probably use both and that's part of the design, once we get underway with design, we would flesh out those details. We would probably use a, a combination of the existing sidewalk and go into the street a little bit where the red curb is, where the parking lane would be, and, and make it even wider. The, the trick is what we do with utilities and stuff, but that's details that we've got to work out, but it, it would be a combination is how we see it.
Thank you. One more question. Can you please explain the difference between a Class One and Class Four?
Yes. A Class One Bike Way is fully separated from traffic like Chandler. A Class Four Bike Way is, is probably ninety percent is separated, but it's, it's within a sidewalk next to a street and there's two versions of that. One is down in the street with just bollards separating the traffic from the bikes. We're not proposing that, we're proposing the better kind, which is up off the curb, raised away from the street so that you have a, a hard curb and a buffer to protect you. So it's like a, it's like a Bike Lane that's built like a Bike Path, if that makes any sense. It's, it's kind of a hybrid of the two, but you get the safety of a Class One Chandler Bike Way along a street. And that wasn't available back from a design standpoint, those standards weren't around when we first went after this project and that was the change that allowed us to move forward is because now the state allows these new types of facilities.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Frutos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Criskie, thank you for your report. Just one question, on the North Victory Boulevard side, does the grant cover, just because the current Chandler Bike Way, it's really a mixed combination of users. I mean, from dog walkers to power walkers to bicyclists. So when it comes on Victory, knowing that we still don't know what's going to go in the old Toys R Us building and kind of thinking into the future, are there any plans on the Victory side to add benches, bigger canopy-type trees for the summer months, just so the residents in that area can, when they do their power walk and get up to Victory? I mean, because it's kind of nice to beautify that if we're using, you know, grant money and Measure R money. Is there plans for that? I didn't see it in the report or any conversation, I haven't heard about that type of amenities.
Um, I think we want to look at that as part of the preliminary design and then come back to you with the feasibility. I think something like street trees is totally doable. Having a lot of extra street furniture and more concentrated landscaping, we'd have to look at the budget. So I think the answer is, we're going to, I think there is definitely opportunity to get something beyond just a stark sidewalk. I think at least some nice street trees that will grow over time is definitely in the, in the cards and I think if it's the majority of the councils wish to look at how to beautify that stretch, we can do that as part of the initial design effort and we'll let you know if there's a, a cost implication to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we adopt a resolution of the council, the city of Burbank, approving a funding agreement between the city of Burbank, Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority to design and construct the Chandler Bike Way Extension Project Attachment One and authorizing the Community Development Director to execute agreements Attachment Two. Check.
Okay, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Telemontes? Vice Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our second report is for the approval of a parking management plan for the downtown Burbank MetroLink Station. Mr. Criskie, will you please present the report?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Again, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. So for tonight, we'd like the city council to consider approving a parking management implementation plan for the downtown Burbank MetroLink Station. Back in May of last year, you adopted a set of parking management principles, which I'll go over again tonight, and then you asked us to come back as a first step to implementing those principles, to come back with a plan for managing the downtown MetroLink Station, which has a lot of issues related to how that station is used that may inhibit transit users and other uses of the station. And so I have a presentation to help me do that. So for tonight, I'd like to give a little bit of a background and a reminder of what we talked about back in May in terms of what we've heard about parking generally and then review with you the citywide parking management principles that you approved back in May. And then with that, moving forward, I'd like to talk about our proposed parking management plan, our proposed- management plan, our proposed strategy for how we would manage the station, some of the details about how it might work under our proposal for folks using the station, talk about some of the MetroLink coordination we've done, and then ask you ultimately if you agree with the plan, to ask us to move forward to actually procure a consult or a parking operator to actually implement the plan. We're proposing that outside parking operator implement this for us, as well as give any direction you have for where we're going. So anything that we talk about in terms of transportation in Burbank falls back to this fact about how many folks come into the city to work each day relative to our residents, and that has an impact on traffic, it has an impact on housing, and it has an impact on parking. And so all of those folks coming into the city by car or by train, or by bus have really impacting effects on our infrastructure and our roadways and our transit. What we've heard about parking over the years is that there's not enough of it, that it's not enforced, that it's in the wrong place for where I'm trying to go, and that it's free, but at the same time, it's expensive, because in, in where we can't solve, or we can't satisfy the first three bullets, the solution we've traditionally looked at is building more of it, and it's very expensive. And so you adopted some parking management principles to try and get at solving these problems. We have a long way to go, or it kind of step, step one for parking management in Burbank, and this is kind of the first step at that, if you agree with our proposal, to start to address those, those issues. In 2019, you adopted these six parking management principles, and in your staff report, attachment is a little narrative for each one. But in short, you asked us to protect single-family parking as a priority, and that's where we get a lot of our complaints, and our, our residents feel parking problems right close to home. You've asked us to, you want us to increase a parking availability, you want us to leverage underutilized private parking, such as businesses that may not use all of their parking because of their business patterns and maybe making that available for public uses. You've asked us to look at regulating street and public parking with pricing, and this was one of, of course, that we really need to look into carefully because you had some trepidation about that, as certainly as our, our residents and constituents do, but you did ask us to, to keep that in mind moving forward. You asked us that if we do have parking revenue, that it be reinvested back in the system, and that it not just go into the general fund, and that if there is surplus revenue, that it maybe also stay in the area where it's generated to help with other public services. And then you've asked us to tailor implementation to each neighborhood or area within the city, because no city, neighborhood, or district in Burbank is exactly alike, and parking problems vary across the city, so we don't want to just use a hammer of the same thing in every neighborhood. So when you approve those principles, you also asked us to come back to talk about how to implement them in downtown Burbank, and so this is where we are tonight to tell you how we, the ideas we have for that. To give you some facts about the MetroLink Station parking, we have about 470 spaces spread across five parking lots, currently unmanaged. The only enforceable restriction we really have at the station is our 72-hour restriction that we have across the city. We have a sign that says that it's for transit use only, but it's a fake sign. We don't actually have the ability to enforce that, so it's really falls back to the 72-hour restriction, and that's common across a lot of our city. We have that 72-hour restriction, and other than that, it's, it's hard to, to provide other management for, for some of our other neighborhoods. This is just an aerial view of the lots. We have our largest lot is on the west side of the station, so on the, the Lake, Olive and Lake Street side, that is complemented then on the east side along Front Street with three smaller lots. The north lot, the middle lot, or I'm sorry, the west lot, the north lot, which is along right in front of the station, is a small amount of parking right close to the station, which of course gets filled up immediately. And then the south, well, it's called east here because it's Burbank East, but the lot along Front Street by the Verdugo on-ramps is a large lot that actually does have some capacity, but it's because it's the farthest away. In coming up with our plan, we felt that these management objectives were important in, they would direct how we implement parking management here. So we think that first and foremost, we want to make sure that convenient parking is always available for transit users. So we think that tran, this is a MetroLink Station, the parking is for transit users, it's not necessarily being used only for transit, it's other uses are, are using it currently, and part of the management is to make sure that the transit user has a convenient way to get in and out, use the station, get there quickly, get on their train, get about their day. However, if that number one is satisfied, then we also think that non-transit users should be able to park there as long as their use doesn't impact the transit users. So we don't know, we have some educated guesses, but we don't know exactly of those 470 spaces, how many are actually transit users versus non-transit users. If we use the lots only for transit, I suspect we would have a lot of extra space, and why not use that parking for other community benefits in that neighborhood? And that's part of what we think this project will identify as, how much extra we have. We want to discourage long-term parking abuse. We know that at the station, it's used for kind of car storage, long-term storage. We get calls of abandoned cars all the time, people dump cars, stolen cars, there's camping activities there, and so we want to try and discourage some of that abuse. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we want to use this implementation to identify if there's any potential surplus parking that could be put to a better economic or community use. That could be having those extra spaces be used for employee parking into downtown. Maybe that's an opportunity to move employees out of the core of downtown into this. Or it could be if we want to use some of our other community assets next to the station as additional, a change in use or using the, our city land for other projects. And we have a, a city own, we, city owns the cold storage plant, and there's been discussions of how to use that more productively. And if parking is necessary, do we have that ability? This would at least tell us if we have the ability to use some of that surplus for other uses. So our, and our proposed implementation plan has kind of four main points. We propose that this plan be managed by a private operator. We don't have the staff resources to assume a big operation and administration of this lot, so we're proposing to seek the services of a parking operator. We, we propose to use price as the mechanism and charging as the mechanism for managing the use, because, and, and to set that price to achieve a target occupancy. So we want to charge just enough, a price that's just enough to make sure we have always a few spaces available for our transit users. We don't want to charge too much, but we also don't want to charge too little, that it still remains overflowing. And more importantly, because we are proposing charging, we think that a tiered system for transit and non-transit users is a way to discourage, or not discourage transit use, but still allow others that aren't transit users to park if they want to. And then we want to use this as the opportunity to use a new way of, of tracking who is able to park, and that's to use a license plate. And this seems like a little trivia thing for this one lot, but if parking management is expanded to the city, or if we want to just make our residential, two-hour, one-hour residential parking enforcement more streamlined, moving to using the license plate as a way to quickly check if you have the permission to park there or not is something we want to try here, rather than what we do now is chalk the tire and then come back. Even just making our enforcement activities more efficient and allowing our parking control officers to use, cover more of the city, if they just drive by and can read the plates, and then that system can know in a database that you have a parking permit or not, and immediately flag if you are getting a ticket or not. That technology, we think, is helpful citywide that we want to try here, but we want your input on that as well. We think that the parking operator would fully manage the MetroLink Station parking, they would furnish all the equipment and supplies, they would collect the parking revenue and enforce the rules. We would have a contract for all of that, and the city staff would basically obviously oversee the operator, make sure he's implementing the plan properly and per your direction, and the city staff would set the price in that performance method that I mentioned, where we set the price to achieve the occupancy or free spaces that we want. The, the operator would charge, of course, for this, but then would be using the revenue from the plan to offset those costs. As I mentioned, parking rates would be set to target to a specific parking occupancy. So for downtown Burbank, a goal that we've thought to set is to achieve 65% to 80% utilization at all times, meaning 35% to 15% of the spaces would be available at all times. And we would adjust the price to, and then monitor the usage to, to see where that equilibrium is. So we would start with a price that we think might be fair, and then we would adjust it up or down to get to that goal of occupancy. And that's a new, a new concept that we haven't tried here in Burbank, but cities are starting to do this because it really directly ties the price to what you want to see out in, in the field. And we have that range of 65% to 85%, because we kind of want to see how sensitive the price is to, to, to providing more of a, of a surplus that we could use back for those additional community or economic uses that I mentioned, whether it be more overflow parking for downtown, whether it be used to support a, a future project. That's why we have the wider range. And most importantly, pricing, we're not proposing to set pricing to maximize revenue, and that's a different way of thinking about this, but we think it's important for how to manage the parking We're proposing that we'd have basically two tiers of pricing. We have availability by monthly passes for our regular users, and that we'd have the ability to buy daily passes for those that use the station occasionally. And we want to make sure that we use technology to make that purchase as convenient as pro, as possible. We think using the ability to have smartphone application to buy it when you're right there, where you can pre-register, and then just when you're using the lot, you can just pay right then. A lot of cities have that. Pasadena, you can pay for curb spacing with your smartphone, and Glendale, you can pay, and then your smartphone can be pinged by the system to tell you that your time's running out, and that you can add more money to the meter without going back to the meter. So we want to, because we have nothing, we want to use that technology and, and see if this is a, a good way to, to introduce that. And then we want to offer discounts for the transit users. For the monthly pass, that would be Burbank residents who are transit users, and for the day pass, we'd want to be able to, to, to contact or tie into the MetroLink ticketing system to validate that you've taken a, a train trip, and then that allows you to get a lowered rate. That involves an additional technological tie-in that we don't want to hold up. I imagine because we're, we will be working with another agency, that could take some time. So in the interim, we're proposing kind of a manual validation, where if you want to get validated for your transit ticket, you would go up and get validated with, with a person that's there managing the, the parking. We'll see how the pricing works with that, because when you add labor, things get more expensive, but at least that's our goal. We think that it's important to make the experience as seamless as possible, even if it means a little more money on the, on the upside. And then I mentioned the tiered pricing, discount prices for transit users, which would require proof of transit purchase. The end goal would be to use your MetroLink ticket on your phone and just tap as you exit. In the meantime, we would do a manual validation And then controlling the ins and outs of who uses the lot, we looked kind of at both options for how to control the access. There's the way of you actually put a gate, and when you arrive at the station, you hit the button, you get a ticket, and the gate opens, and then when you leave, you pay before you get out. But the way the lots are situated, we think that may be hard to retrofit the lots to, to have safe ingress and egress. So what we're proposing is a gateless system, where you come in and you pay at a kiosk or with your phone, and then we're enforcing because, we're enforcing based on the fact that you have, have put in your license plate, and we know that you've paid, and then we can enforce it that way. It is a little bit less capital-intensive and doesn't require modifications to the parking lot, which we think would be more complicated. And as I mentioned, this would all be through the parking operator, so that includes revenue collection and enforcement of the parking rules. And then, just to let you know, we have been coordinating with MetroLink to ensure that our desire to manage the station doesn't run afoul of their goals to maintain and increase their ridership. They are supportive of managing parking. They like the idea that we have to use the MetroLink ticket as the credential for a reduced rate. They are interested in working with us to be the first city to do that on MetroLink. I will say that Metro is doing this right now at Metro Rail. For you to buy a pass at a Metro Rail station, at many of them, including our two in, in the valley, you need to have a tap card that they know you've used. So we were, want to mimic that in the long term with MetroLink, and they're, they want to be our partner. They did have, they did have comments to ensure that we make the parking transaction as simple as possible, because they don't want you to arrive at the station and be fumbling to try and pay for parking because your train is arriving and it's going to cause stress and, and issues. So using the smartphone, using the license plate, where you can arrive and just pay is, is the way we want to go with that. And of course, leaving at least the ability to pay cash at a kiosk if you do have none of those and you need to pay, we will have the option to, to pay, to pay manually, at least that's what we're, we're requesting. In terms of fiscal impact, I mentioned this, if you like, if you agree with our approach, we would procure a parking operator that would be paid with the revenue generated by the parking fees. Any management costs not covered by parking revenues would be paid by the city, and we have some local return funds that you've identified for parking management that we would apply for that. Or if revenues exceed costs, then that surplus revenue would be ours, and we, we propose that that revenue be reinvested back in the MetroLink Station. It, it costs the city over $300,000 a year to maintain our station, so if we do have a surplus, we recommend that that be put back into the station. The reason we have this two scenarios is, this is the first, this would be the first implementation of parking management. It's just on a small, relatively small scale, it's not a, a whole district of the city, and we're asking for kind of a really good customer experience, because this is the first implementation. But because of that, we, we don't know what kind of prices we're going to get, and so we don't know, we can't with confidence say that the revenues will, will match the expenditures. We've done some rough costs based on what we might charge and what cost for this equipment might be, and we think it could break even, but we won't know until we go out to bid and get prices from, from the operators. And so that's why we have that caveated there. So the next steps, if you would like to move forward with this, is we would go out and advertise a request for proposals. We have started that process in terms of developing the RFP. We are involving our information technology department, as well as our police department, to craft that, so that we get a good, tight response from the operators. We would return to the City Council this summer to award a contract, and then we hope to begin operations in the fall and, and, and begin the implementation. So just to conclude, staff's recommendation is to approve the parking management plan that I've described for you tonight, and then to direct staff to procure the services of a parking operator, which we would bring back to you for approval with the awarding of a contract. And that concludes my presentation. Madam Mayor, I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have any comment cards? Okay, council, comments, questions? Yes, Councilmember Frutos. Excuse me, Vice Mayor Frutos.
That's, that's okay. I'm used to getting demoted. Mr. Chriskey?
Sir.
A couple of questions. Have we reached out to Amtrak? How we're going to handle folks, say, on the weekend that drop their car off on a Friday, take the train to San Diego, or they go north to Santa Barbara, three or four days? Have we reached out to Amtrak to work on, you know, some type of reduced parking for those folks?
We have not reached out to Amtrak only because we only have one Amtrak train that stops in downtown at this time. If we were to extend, if this works and we extend it to other systems, or if Amtrak were to stop in downtown, which is another goal we have, then absolutely I would want to integrate the same sort of validation for them as we would for MetroLink. But because there's just the one train, we have not reached out to them for this project.
How about Megabus and MTA? Because that's a big bus stop also.
So that is a good question. We are, at this point, proposing just to talk and use MetroLink as the validation. That isn't to say we can't also validate MetroBuses. I think that the, the users of MetroLink are probably out, folks that drive to the station to take transit, I think, I just think are mostly MetroLink. The, the, the folks using Metro is probably less, and then Megabus is smaller still. I think Metro, if you did want to move forward to validate against all of those, I think Metro would be more straightforward. I think Megabus being private with the private ticketing, I think, would be a bit more of a challenge. But if the council wants us to look at all of the other users, we can do that. I think we should start, this is going to be kind of complex as it is. I suggest we start just with MetroLink, but it's up to the council to tell us what, what they think.
And then, have you taken into consideration in your research Lot 1 South? The, the folks from the Burbank Tournament of Roses, that's kind of their overfill, and I would hate to have to charge them when they're volunteering their time that benefits the city. How are you going to be able to handle, because it's a year-round process? And yeah, certain times they only have three or four, and they park on their own lot, but... And yeah, certain times they only have three or four and they park on their own lot, but when they do have big projects, sometimes they get eight to 12 people to 50 people. How are we going to address their parking needs? Cause I sure hope we don't have to charge them, but I do want to make sure that their parking is still secured as this has been going on forever and now all of a sudden, you know, we're going to be charging parking. Have you taken that into consideration?
Um, so the, the policy is to, to have a lower charge for transit and a different charge for other, but that's a council prerogative. Um, when you, uh, if you do want to move forward and come back, um, to, to implement this, um, we would also be asking you to formally to, uh, set the pricing structure, um, and then also hopefully letting us, um, A, have two tiers and then also letting us adjust periodically for, to meet the demand. If at that time you would like, um, a group like the Tournament of Roses to have a validation, um, then you would direct us to, to, to deal with that and we would, we would include that as part of the operations.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy.
Mr. Chriskey, uh, you said, um, that if we made a profit, we'd reinvest it in the station. Did you mean the parking at the station or, or the station itself or both?
Uh, I would say both. Um, the station overall, the figure I quoted of the three, the 300 plus, 350 plus is for everything. Um, that's for all of the operations. One thing that doesn't include that annual charge is, um, is, uh, is, is, um, capital, um, programmatic capital, just like a lot of our other city buildings. We've kind of, um, are now grappling with, um, uh, bringing them up to state of good repair, looking at investing programmatic capital to bring them up. The station is in the same boat. Um, so we would, um, I would say use the funds for everything, um, but we do, um, things like the parking lot resurfacing and that sort of thing, we're going to study to see what those needs are. Um, but the short answer is yes, we would use it for all. I think the operations to start, um, the, the actual day-to-day operations, because that comes right off the top every, you know, every month we're paying those costs. Um, but that would reserve additional local return funds to do then other programmatic capital improvements at the station.
And if I recall correctly, and I, I don't ride the train a lot. Um, the, uh, uh, I think they use, uh, just a paper ticket, right? As opposed to Metro, uh, the subway, which uses a, a tap card and they have, uh, parking, uh, through a machine, through licenses and stuff. The first time you do it, it's really complicated and it takes a long time, but once you get it down, it works pretty well. Uh, is there any thoughts that MetroLink would go to a tap type card?
So, um, they have two, uh, types now. They have still the paper tickets if you go to the kiosk, but, um, they also have on your smartphone, there's an app, um, that you download that is, um, becomes your ticket. And so you can buy through there, you can hook up your credit card. Um, when you buy the ticket, it's activated, you get a, a QR code, kind of a barcode, um, that says to the, their, uh, train conductors that your, your fare is valid. Um, our long-term vision is that you would use that same credential and swipe or tap when you're leaving, uh, the station, um, uh, to get that parking deduction. Integrating with the paper ticket would be harder. Um, but for now, like I said, we're, we're, we're going to go out for RFP and ask for the cost to have a manual validation to start.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Talamontes.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Chriskey. Uh, just to make my colleagues aware, we do have three stations in Burbank and we are responsible for the upkeep of those stations. You know, so when you talk about 300,000, I don't know if that's all three of them. That's for one. So you start talking about number two and number three, you're talking half a million dollars if not more. Uh, so whatever we can get from here is, is more than we're getting now. And my whole intention of talking about this was the fact that, um, we can reinvest in the location, just like has been said. We can reinvest at the, in the station itself because it's our, when it comes to fixing the elevator, guess who fixes it? Us. We, the city, we, the general fund. Um, so if we can get some revenue out of that parking, just like Metro has at all their, at all their stops. Metro started not charging and then they went to the charging because they were noticing there was a lot of non-transit users were using, was using the parking. So they went to charging and they're still overflowing. I mean, it didn't, it didn't, uh, drive away people, oh, I'm not going to pay. No, they're still paying and they want to use the, the metro stations. Uh, so I, you know, I, I would encourage my colleagues that we move forward with this and, uh, see where we go with this and bring us some options. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I have a few questions. Um, so likely there will be 24-hour parking paid.
Um, yes, the, is, we, um, didn't necessarily talk about limiting it overnight just because some transit users are spanning multiple days. However, um, we were just even talking this afternoon, kind of the nuts and bolts of things, assuming, um, the council wants us to proceed forward. There may be a reason where we still impose the 72-hour just because if someone's there for a long period of time and they're accruing daily charges and then, you know, suddenly, you know, they come back two weeks later and, and there's issues with customer service issues with that. Or, um, again, there's some issues with kind of that abuse of long-term parking that the daily charge still may not, or monthly charge still may not discourage. Um, so it's a bit of an open question, but we're kind of leaning towards still maybe maintaining the 72-hour, um, but that's still open, um, that detail's still open.
Thank you. And how much does it cost to park at the NoHo Red Line? Do you know?
Um, so daily, I checked this morning, daily, or this afternoon, daily was, um, $3. Monthly, I think was 59 and then there was a reduced rate for carpoolers.
And is there a lot, are there lots well-used? Are they full?
Well, um, I, when it first went in, at first it had a drastic drop in demand enough that where there was no parking, now people could find parking. But, um, Councilmember Talamontes is mentioning that it's still overflowing, um, and I've heard anecdotally that it's still, um, still there. What that suggests to me is that they need to maybe look at the price because they haven't met the occupancy goal. Um, they probably have a similar occupancy goals that we're proposing, 80 or 85%. Um, so they probably need to look at adjusting those prices.
So, by the way, the hand blower in the ladies restroom is broken at the, the MetroLink station.
Okay. We will, we will have that addressed.
Um.
Delegate that for me.
Um, well, just talking about money for maintenance, so. I have a question about the enforcement, like with the, um, the license plate. Does that take a person to do that or would that be, happen on the way out? Would there be something to scan?
So, we're still, um, assuming you give us the permission to move forward, that's where we're talking with police and IT on how the technology can solve that or make it the most convenient. Um, you could, um, on the basic end, when you paid at the kiosk, you could be asked instead of the putting, uh, to putting in like a parking space number or, uh, some places it's kind of a pain, but you get the ticket and then you got to go back to your car and put it on the dashboard. Um, there's another way where you would type in your license plate, which is also a little cludgy because you, not everyone knows what their license plate is, but, um, there'd be a way to type that into the system. There's also ways you could actually use, um, uh, license plate cameras on entry to capture the plate, um, and then know, um, have the system know if you've paid or not. Um, that detail, we need to work out to see what's most convenient, what's cost-effective. Um, but moving forward, we want to use the, we want to look at using plates because, um, for enforcement across, you know, on streets, it's a lot easier because you have a car with a, um, camera and it just drives by and it pings and it, it knows you either have a, a, you know, a parking permit or that you've stayed within two hours. Um, and if not, then it pings and then the officer can stop and, and write the ticket. So, um, it allows us to use, uh, cover much more of the city with our parking control officer resources, um, using technology. And, um, we want to get there also. Um, that's a bigger project and so we want to try the MetroLink station as a way to, to, to see how that works on a smaller scale.
Thank you. Um, and moving forward, all the, with all this, as we vote for it, i- if we vote for it, um, will the, the cost of the, of a pink line ticket be taken into consideration? Just to encourage more people to take the pink line instead of park, park, parking because it's pretty inexpensive right now to use it. And, um, since it's been implemented just for two months now, the ridership, the last I heard is it exceeded expectations by 30%. So, that would be an alternative to parking for, um, those people coming from that direction?
Yeah, yes. I think, um, we, by having, we want, it's, it, setting the prices, um, is, is delicate because we want to incur, we don't want to discourage the train users for those that are going to be driving no matter what. We want to reserve space for those people instead of having non-transit users use it.
Right.
But then, yeah, the ultimate is really not to take the car at all. I mean, that's the best way to, 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 to do transit is you're, you're coming in on the train and then you're transferring to Burbank Bus and you're not on our streets, you're not on the region streets. What some people do do is, um, they come in on the train, but they have a car here that just sits and then they get in that car and they drive to Warner Brothers. So, it's helping the region because we're on MetroLink and we're better, but when you're down to the local, the Burbank and our congestion, it's doing us no good because we still have that car on the road. So, do we want to maybe not discourage it, but maybe softly move people with a little bit of a charge into Burbank Bus, which if you're going to the media district, um, we really want you to take that. And you're right, it's, with a MetroLink ticket, it's free. Um, so, um, yes, it's setting the, the, using the, the charge to get us to, to achieve several goals, um, to get more people into transit is, is kind of our, our goal.
And another question. It might be too early. So if somebody buys their MetroLink ticket before, can they use that on the pink line before getting on MetroLink?
If they, um, if they have a monthly pass that's been activated at the beginning of the month, um, then it will work. Um, technically, if it's not been activated.
Then you would have to, they would have to activate their ticket, I would think.
Yeah, and if it's on the phone, you can activate it and you have a grace period, I think of an hour. Um, so yeah, I think.
Okay.
With the smartphone, yes. Um, with the paper ticket, um, no, but quite frankly, we're still checking, on MetroLink, we're still checking manually. Our tap card, MetroLink's tap system isn't integrated into, into the metro system. It's still, as you mentioned, paper for some of it. So, we're still just checking. Um, so, uh, I don't think we're going to, um, um, really parse the details of are you coming to or from.
Right. Well, I used it yesterday and he just looked at my phone and he just paddly did.
Yeah.
And, um, so somebody could get to the MetroLink station for free and get on the train and travel round trip to LA for $3.75.
Yes. We're, we're not trying to make money with the dollar.
Right, right.
We're trying to get people to use this.
That's just FYI.
Yes.
$3.75 round trip, using the pink route and, um.
And 19 minutes to downtown LA, which is.
Right.
Even in free flow conditions on the freeway, it's pretty competitive.
Right. It is. It is. I was, I was quite pleasantly surprised at, um, the efficiency of it. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yeah. Smartphones are way smarter than I. Anyway, um, 72-hour parking restriction, we're kind of making a joke out of it. Who enforces that over there at the MetroLink station?
Uh, today, police.
Police enforces that?
So, our parking enforcement, uh, officers, um, uh, they, there is a beat, I believe, that includes the station, but our PCOS are stretched across a lot of competing areas of the city, so we're not going to get to that, uh, every day. Um, if we see a lot of potential, uh, abuse of the lot, then, um, the police department will send folks in, um, to do some enforcement. Um, and at that time, we also usually see some abandoned cars and other things that then we can deal with. Uh, but for right now, it's, um, it's just a pub, just like on any other.
You're being very generous by saying, "We will enforce this, we will take care of this. If we see this, we will do this."
Yes, and I think the input, the manage, parking management and charging and having the operator, um, uh, enforce or enforce the rules, that I, that, that, the point of that is to have that behavior improved because we're going to have much more enforcement because the operator is going to be checking it all the time versus right now, as you mentioned.
Sure.
It's, it's, uh, limited.
It's more reactive than proactive.
Yes.
Now, Madam City Attorney, can we do something more to put more teeth into that 72-hour limitation? Insert Darius.
Well, the 72 hours, I mean, that's standard for right-of-way. I think if it's our parking lot, we can probably do much more and I know even Metro use the red line at Universal lot and they have, like, some of the stuff they do to make sure commuters get it is during, at the first hours of the day, it's limited parking unless you have the permit and then it's $3. They have the same thing where it's enforceable. So, you know, I, if we're talking about right now, I think we're hard to do more unless we come up with some other rules for the parking lots and then we'd have to, we'd be treating them differently. We're not going to.
Well, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. If there's other cities that are doing something better than we are, they've got best practices. This, bring them to Burbank and see if we can use them here. Doesn't, doesn't mean that we will use them, but if.
Yeah.
If they fit Burbank, why not?
Right. But what I'm saying is like right now, we have limitations in a lot of our lots. And so the question is, is I'm not, I can't speak for the police if they're enforcing those limitations now in our current lots. You know, we have issues around, I'm, see the chief's here, I'm not trying to put anybody in the spot. But we have issues all, right? We put like two-hour parking limits along certain streets and then it's up to the police. So, it just depends what we want to do, but we can, we not, we're not left to just the 72 hours. I think the problem that David's talking about, without having somebody actually operating, what do we want to try to enforce more there? Right?
Yeah. Without, without management, we happen to have the 72-hour and it's enforced, um, to the, within the resources that we have. Uh, and yes, we have the 72-hour because it's consistent with the streets, but because it's a lot, we could, we could change that too. Um, and again, the parking management that we're proposing, it kind of, the 72-hour thing doesn't become such a deal because we're there now with an enforcement, private enforcement is, is enforcing the daily rates all the time.
Let me ask the chief, could you weigh in on this in regards to, I know you, you're understaffed, uh, when it comes to parking control officers?
So I can answer this way. Um, what we try to do is have equal informant, enforcement for each one of our problems. So, we are the recipients of copious complaints and what we have to do is take our precious few, uh, parking control officers and then very judiciously, uh, deploy them throughout the city, uh, on, on different hours. It's not just a day watch problem. It, it's a 24/7 problem and as you're well aware, we've got restricted parking overnight in some areas. So what we have to do is continually move our resources around to, to tackle the problem. What we try not to do is establish a pattern so somebody can pick up on it and then, uh, get away with something. So it's something that we're going to have to look at in the future in terms of having perhaps more, uh, parking control officers or better technology. I think David Chriskey's already alluded to that, to if we had, um, a better parking system where people could drive in and automatically have their, their, uh, license plates recorded and then be able to, to, uh, collect money that way. It, it's very burdensome to have somebody go out the way we do things and mark cars and have to come back and recheck. So there are ways that technology can take care of a lot of these problems and you'll probably be seeing that as a budget request in not-too-distant future.
Now, Chief, do you have parking, parking control officers working at night?
Yes. Not all the time, but we move them around. Just so.
The other night around 11, 11:30, I was walking my dog and I saw one of those parking control vehicles.
Yes.
Coming down Cambridge at Kenneth.
They could have been up on the hill and that's probably where they were because of, of some of the issues there. But again, we just continually move them around. We do get complaints and then we try to address each one of them if we can. And what we're doing is trying to prioritize where we've been and where the the most complaints are coming from as well.
So you go where the loudest.
Pardon me?
Where the people, the squeak is loudest here, that's where you focus on.
Well, we we know from historical patterns as well, but either we we are the police department to the entire city, just not to one portion.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Vice Mayor Frutos.
Mr. Krisky, you had me supporting the staff report until a couple of things came up. The overnight parking regard, you made a comment as, you know, we're trying to get people that come from out of town and they drive over to Warner Brothers as an example. I'd like to support that and the only reason why is because, you know, you look at our real estate market here in Burbank and just today, the LA County real estate market came out that now the average home is up to like six hundred and twenty thousand dollars within the county. There still has been an increase in real estate. So as people are coming from, you know, Santa Clarita, Acton, Palmdale, they don't have a choice but to have a local car left here so they can go to work. I I want to be supportive of the staff report and I want to be supportive of public transportation and looking at the reality that not everybody can live in Burbank. And we have over a hundred and fifty-eight thousand jobs when Warner Brothers is at full production. There are over nine thousand people, not to include post-production. And so if somebody is willing to take public transportation and leave a car here so they can go to Warner Brothers, that still relieves a parking spot during the business daytime hours. So when that employee gets off work at Warner Brothers and drives back to downtown MetroLink, I don't want them on the freeway. I want them on a train to, you know, so I I am a little bit concerned about that. I would like to see some type of parking pass permit at least up to thirty days because seventy-two hours to me is is a hammer versus the spirit. And and I get it, I have seen the campers, I have seen the abandoned, you know, vehicles there, the stolen vehicles that have been stripped there. So I understand where you're going with this, but I don't want, if I support this, I don't want to feel that we're we're being the hammer of the letter of the law versus the spirit. Because if you look at downtown Union Station, I drive down there and I leave my car up to two or three days when I take a Disney cruise somewhere out of San Diego. So I know that there's people that will drive here that don't want to drive up to San Francisco and they'll take Megabus or to Las Vegas. I just want to make sure that I don't want to be the hammer on seventy-two hours. I I I like to move this forward knowing that you look at these type of examples because even at the downtown Union Station on the MTA site, their building, they charge eight bucks a day. And there's a lot of people that will come in from San Bernardino, Orange County, they'll drop off, you know, they'll get off the train and then they'll get into their personal vehicle and then go out to wherever they work and come back. So I want to make sure there's something there that still supports the folks that just can't live here and they've already have their home with San Bernard, wherever. I I just ask that as this comes back, don't be the hammer. Let's go with the spirit that, you know, there's flexibility that if there's somebody that, yeah, they leave a car here at nighttime. It doesn't, you know, because we're looking at daytime hours to make sure that the commuters can park and get on the train and go. I support that, but it kind of cringed me a little bit when you said, wow, you know, we're trying to get those people that leave a car here over. Soften up on that if as you move forward. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Murphy.
Yeah, I had a similar reaction, but the opposite point of view. Don't the studios have shuttles? There's a Media District shuttle that runs down Olive and goes to the studios.
Well, that's that's your service. That's the pink route that we carry a lot of studio folks on Burbank Bus right down Olive. It used to be, in your first time on the council, it was called the Media District Shuttle. We but we do run that and we we do, best case, we do want folks to use that because it takes you right to the door, right to the front door.
So I'd like to see them leave their car wherever the heck it is and take that and do us a favor all the way around. And we're not going to get it right the first time. I mean, we're going to have issues and we'll fix them. Yeah? Well, let's do it.
Yes.
I agree with Councilmember Murphy. We already have a bus system. You take the train into Burbank, you take the bus into the metro, I mean, the media's area, right? So do they have to pay anything?
Not if they're MetroLink rider, no.
There you go. So it's free all around. So leave their car at home. It's great that you want to use it here, but I don't agree with that at all.
Council, Vice Mayor Frutos.
But we haven't taken into consideration, the school district has a huge employment base, the city of Burbank, we have, we have city employees that leave city cars at the downtown MetroLink that live up in Santa Clarita. So, no, we have to be open to this possibility. Our bus service isn't the best. There's still an empty bus that goes up my street. We have two major aerospace industries down by the airport. They don't have a bus. We got to look at the reality here. I don't want to be the hammer on this. I still want to give people the option to hopefully take public transportation into the city, but we don't have a reliable bus service that's going to take them to their job.
Let's move this forward and see what the suggestion is.
Wait, you know, I I agree. I think we'll just transition. You know, if that's.
Working progress.
Right, right. And so if we need to have the let somebody park there, I don't have a problem with that if they take the train into from Santa Clarita and they they get in their car because I think over time, as our bus service gets better, they will choose to take the bus. But right now, they need to have that option. And I just want to clarify one thing. When I took the MetroLink, the the train schedule wasn't, the MetroLink schedule wasn't good to get me back, so I took the red line free with my MetroLink ticket to Universal and then it's twenty-five minutes from Universal back to downtown Burbank. No.
Be quicker if you took the yellow.
No, it really wasn't. So if you live halfway, then, anyway.
I think.
I think it's going to take care of itself as the bus system gets better.
The discussion you're having on those finer points, we will, we can bring back the range of options and the overall, if you all agree with the overall, I don't want the fine points of what we're talking about. We can hash that out with the with the details and get and then and pull the council. And and the point that I raised, it's not like, you could argue it both ways and we heard both ways, so I think that we shouldn't let that detail.
Right, right, right. They should have an option.
I understand both points of view completely.
They should have an option to take the Burbank trolley.
That's right. I move that we approve a parking management plan for the downtown Burbank MetroLink station and direct staff to procure the services of a parking operator to implement the plan.
Second, which won't have a hammer.
Okay, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Telemontes? Vice Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thanks.
Our last report tonight is for the review of the General Fund's financial status as of December thirty-first, twenty nineteen, and for the approval of a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty budget for the purpose of mid-year adjustments. At this time, I would like to invite Ms. Cindy Geraldo, Financial Services Director, to please present the report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Cindy Geraldo with the Financial Services Department. I did prepare a presentation for this evening. Hopefully they'll get that up. All right, so I'm here tonight to present the fiscal year nineteen twenty mid-year financial report. As part of this report, we will review the general fund revenues and expend expenses for the midway point of our fiscal year. We will review the mid-year department funding requests and conclude with a look at our five-year forecast and the fast approaching fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget schedule. So with that, let's start with a look at the general fund revenues. As shown in this table, our reoccurring revenue projection for the current fiscal year is just over a hundred and ninety-two million. Due to the natural timing of revenue collections, we have collected about thirty-seven point eight percent of the revenues. For comparison, at this time last year, we had collected thirty-eight point one percent of the revenues at this time. You'll remember at the first quarter report, we made two revenue adjustments totaling just over one point one million dollars. In addition, we put three revenues on high watch for possible future adjustment. With one more quarter of information, we are proposing adjustments to each of these three revenues. The proposed revenue revisions net to an increase in projected revenue of just over one point six million dollars. The first mid-year revenue, excuse me, revenue revision is to sales tax. As a sign of a continuing strong economy, we continue to see our sales tax revenue outperform our projections. Key drivers include revenues from fuel and service station sales tax predominantly led by jet fuel. Other positive factors include county pool allocations and increased discount and general consumer good retail sales in the city. With the passage of Measure P, the city has started to receive an additional three-quarter cent sales tax. For the first six months, the city has received a total of eight point six million dollars in Measure P revenue, of which fifty percent or four point three million has been deposited into the general fund and the other fifty percent has gone into the city's municipal infrastructure fund where it will be prioritized for infrastructure maintenance and improvement projects as directed by council's adopted infrastructure maintenance, repair and improvement funding policy. Other offsetting sales tax revenues are two downward adjustments to our utility users' tax and the in lieu of tax revenue. The city has a seven percent utility users' tax on telecom, natural gas and electric service. As we have consistently reported in the past, we are continuing to see a decline in telecom UUT as more plans shift towards the non-taxable database plans. Further impacting this revenue stream is electric conservation as well as improved efficiency. These combined ongoing factors are responsible for the one point two million downward adjustment in our UUT revenue. We have also adjusted our long-term projections for this revenue to show an annual decline of two of two percent. Also impacted by electrical conversation, conservation as well as efficiency, we are reducing our revenue projections for our in lieu of tax. This is also a seven percent tax on electrical charges. And similarly, we are adjusting our five-year forecast for this revenue to reflect a decline of one point five percent annually. So this table summarizes our fiscal year nineteen twenty mid-year general fund expenditures by department. Overall, the general fund expenditures came in at forty-nine point six percent of the annual approved budget. This, of course, coincides with our general expectation of about fifty percent. At this time last year, we had expended forty-eight point seven percent. You'll note on the chart, there are two departments that are currently trending above expectations. However, that is due to expected timing differences and we do anticipate for all departments to remain within their authorized budget authority for the current fiscal year. As a part of our mid-year report, we do provide the departments with the opportunity to request adjustments to their budgets to account for changed circumstances or unanticipated expenses. All requests received by the department has been summarized for you and are detailed in Attachment Four of the staff report that's been provided. The approval of these requests have been incorporated into the general fund forecast, which we'll be seeing shortly. With that said, we have approximately four hundred and ninety-three thousand in general fund appropriation requests, offset by two hundred and fifty-seven thousand in revenue for a net general fund impact of two hundred and thirty-six thousand. For all other city funds combined, we have a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in appropriation requests, which are completely offset by revenue adjustments for a zero-dollar net fiscal impact to those funds. As mentioned, Attachment Four provides the details of these requests, including the requesting department as and the justification for the request. A representative from each of those departments is here this evening to answer any questions that you may have on those items. Just to highlight a few of our larger general fund requests, the requests include consulting services for the Convenancy Development Department to assist with meeting new state deadlines for processing accessory dwelling units or ADU applications. These services are offset by increased revenues from plan check activity anticipated related to those same ADUs. Other requests include funds for the police department software system, which are required for the national incident-based reporting system. These are mandated reporting standards and an increase in our citywide educational reimbursement program. Non-general fund requests include additional housing assistance payments for the Burbank Housing Authority. Due to a veteran affair supportive housing award received from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, we will be able to issue ten additional vouchers, increasing them to a total of fifteen vouchers. So with that, we can now take a look at our fiscal year nineteen twenty year-end projections based on the revised revenue projections we just discussed and the adopted appropriations. We are expecting a reoccurring balance in the current year of approximately eight point one million dollars. On the non-reoccurring or one-time resource side, we have incorporated all one-time funding approved as part of our current year budget by the city council. And we have, of course, are funding some significant items as dictated by the city council financial policies, including the funding of our formal working capital and emergency reserves, as well as our compensated absences reserve and a ten point seven million dollar deposit to a soon-to-be-established one-fifteen trust in compliance with council's pension funding policy. After funding all of these items, we anticipate a one-time or non-reoccurring balance of eight point three million dollars. So combining these numbers, our year-end general fund spendable balance is projected to be approximately sixteen point four million. This balance, along with our fully funded reserves, is available to the council entering into our next budget year. However, I will remind the council that our proposed multi-year pension funding plan incorporates the use of available one-time resources. If approved as part of our next budget, eight point seven million dollars of this balance will be paid to CalPERS, which will leave approximately seven point six million as available beginning general fund balance. So with that, we'll take a look at our five-year general fund forecast. The purpose of the financial forecast is to provide insight on the potential long-term financial trends of the general fund. The long-term perspective is meant to allow the city council to make informed decisions while fully understanding the future financial impacts of those decisions. Based on current assumptions, it is staff's expectation that general fund reoccurring revenue will grow by an average of two point four percent, while the expenditure growth will average three point one percent over the five-year forecast. Forecasted revenues are driven by the parameters included within Attachment Three of the staff report. These assumptions are inherently conservative, however, there is risk that certain revenues may not perform as projected due to economic cycles as well as potential future legislation. Forecasted revenues include increases to sales tax as discussed resulting from the passage of passage of Measure P, in addition to continued growth of retail sales throughout the city. And also includes increases to property tax as a result of the elimination of the redevelopment agency, as well as anticipated development projects. And as discussed earlier, declining revenue is projected for UUT as well as in lieu of tax revenue. The main drivers of our projected expenses here in the city are our salaries and benefits. The forecasted expenditure growth incorporated incorporates market rate compensation and as dictated by council policy, as well as the continued implementation of employees paying fifty percent of the normal cost of their pensions. As council will remember, one of the main challenges facing the city is the projected long-term increase in the city's unfunded liability payment, typically called the UAL payment. This annual CalPERS required payment, shown as the green line on this chart, escalates for about the next eleven years and continues until the city completely funds the three hundred and ninety-one million unfunded pension liability balance. The blue line on this chart shows on the timeline where our current five-year forecast ends and the red dashed line, which I'm calling the affordability line, shows how much of the UAL payment we believe the general fund can afford to pay. So the challenge to the city is to shift that green line below the affordability line to obviously the greatest extent possible. To that end, the city council has taken action to direct staff to employ two strategies: the use of one-time funds to implement a multi-year pension funding plan to pay down the liability balance and to establish a one-fifteen supplemental pension trust, which can be used by the city to reserve funds that will help the city in future years absorb economic volatility as well as potential future CalPERS changes. So staff proposed and council supported a multi-year funding strategy with a total citywide four-year funding commitment of fifty-three million. The city, with this funding strategy, the city is projected to achieve approximately sixty-three million in interest expense savings while at the same time lowering future annual liability payments. As part of the current year budget, staff made the first payment of this multi-year plan to CalPERS in July of two thousand nineteen and the positive results are already evident. Based on our council-approved fifty million dollar citywide payment made. Based on our council-approved $50 million citywide payment made this past July, we have received an updated UAL payment from CalPERS. Initially, our fiscal year 2021 payment was projected to be 30.1 million dollars, but it has been revised to just under 28.4 million. This is a citywide annual reoccurring savings of 1.7 million dollars, of which almost 1.2 is direct savings to our general fund. So with the continued implementation of the multi-year funding strategy, we hope to change the position of that green line to be what is reflected by the purple line on our chart. You can see the increase to payments in the first four years as a result of the funding plan, and then the drop in the line in all the future years as we accelerate the payment of the 391 million unfunded liability balance. There we go. However, neither that green or purple line is static. There are no guarantees, as there are numerous variables that can impact what our ultimate UAL payment will be. One variable that continues to get a lot of discussion on the CalPERS board is further reductions to the CalPERS-assumed investment return. By reducing the long-term investment return, CalPERS can reduce the risk and ultimately the volatility of their investment portfolio. However, it would fall on the participating agencies, like our city, to pay the difference of what would have been earned by higher investment yields. To illustrate, if CalPERS chose to reduce the investment return by just a quarter of a percent to 6.75%, we would then see our purple payment line shift upwards. The dotted purple line shows what we could project our new annual payment to be under that scenario. So this not unlikely scenario exemplifies the need to address the pension issue with multiple strategies. Our goal is to maintain the UAL payment line as far as possible below our affordability line, and this can be achieved through our funding plan to lower the UAL payment. But we need to also pursue strategies that raise our affordability line, strategies that increase our revenues, that lower our costs while still protecting the community from negative impacts. So here again is a look at our five-year forecast. All years are balanced, and we are making significant strides towards ensuring financial stability for the long term. That said, there is risk, in particular, related to potential CalPERS changes and their ultimate performance results, but also with the stability of the economy. It would take less than a 3% downturn in our general fund reoccurring revenues to see the city return to a deficit position at the tail end of our forecast. However, if we stay the course and continue to make financially prudent investments in both fortifying revenues and implementing council and labor initiatives, we should be able to continue to provide our community with solid services and an overall improvement in our citywide infrastructure. With that said, that's a good segue into our fiscal year 2021 budget schedule. The proposed fiscal year 2021 budget will be available to this council and to the community on April 10. There will be a dedicated city council budget meeting on April 14, with continued budget presentations on April 21, followed by two public hearings: the first on May 5 for the adoption of the city utility rates, and a second for the city budget adoption on May With that, we recommend that the city council approve the resolution amending the fiscal year 1920 budget for the purpose of mid-year adjustments, and of course, we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Do we have any comment cards?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, council. Questions, comments? Thank you very much for your presentation. This is the time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments.
Did we need a recommendation?
Oh, sorry. Excuse me. Okay. Recommendation, is there a motion? It was too easy.
Adopt a resolution, move that we adopt a resolution of the Council of City of Burbank amending the budget of fiscal year 2019 and 2020 for the purpose of mid-year adjustments. Now, the second thing we didn't really talk about. You want me to do that one, too? Just do it? Okay. Adopt a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Burbank amending the budget of fiscal year 2019 and 2020 for the purpose of mid-year adjustments as well.
Okay. Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Noting the absence of Councilmember Gabe Letty.
Okay.
Is that Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Rottle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is the time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee Okay, Vice Mayor Frutos.
All right. Going back to Wednesday, the 12th of February, I attended the Board of Library Trustees meeting. I have nothing to report back to the council as the delay is on. And then on Thursday, February 13, I attended a farewell for our employee Alyssa Harrison, who is moving to Kansas City. And she was, I believe, 15 years worked with us, right out of high school, and it was time for her.
Kansas City, Missouri, or Kansas City, Kansas?
I think it's Kansas City, Kansas, if I remember.
Be careful what you tweet.
No. She went to Kansas City?
Missouri.
Wichita, Wichita. There you go. Thank you. And then on Tuesday, February 18, the mayor and I met with the executive director of the YMCA and her board chair, and basically, she gave us an update of what was going on with the YMCA and gave us some of their views for future development of the YMCA. And then I also attended, after that meeting, the Board of Library Trustees had a special meeting that they called for on Tuesday, February 18. And that was their time to meet with a consultant, and they gave their perspectives of what they think about the library services and the future of libraries in general in the city of Burbank. So I want to thank all the members for participating in that. And then on Wednesday, February 19, I attended the State of the Schools Breakfast. And then later on that evening, I attended the, Kiwanis had a meet and greet, and this was all around youth and government. They were up in Sacramento for about a week with their youth and government, and they get to present bills to legislators and, you know, learn model process. And then on Thursday, February 20, I attended the Economic Alliance, the governor's meeting. And then I also attended, later on that evening, the Boy Scouts of America for Dougal Hills Council Recognition Dinner. And then yesterday, along with the mayor, I attended the Burbank Housing Rights Workshop. And pretty much, I saw most of our landlord-tenant commission members there that were active engaged with the community members, talking about landlord-tenant issues. And that is all I have to report. Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see, last week, I was up in Sacramento for four days. The first two days, Tuesday and Wednesday, were representing SCAG. We got to meet a lot of the electives, obviously, from our area, and we scheduled, staff-scheduled meetings with like four or five electives throughout the course of the day. Got to meet, got to see Senator Portantino, got to see Assemblymember Friedman. So it was very productive, obviously, from our region with SCAG. The last two days, Thursday and Friday, I was up in Yountville, California. Very nice community, just north of Napa. And I was there for League of California Cities Board Meeting. The governor showed up and spoke with the board. He's got great plans. He's got, number one, housing, housing, housing on his mind this coming year. So he says, we all have to work together. If you want some of the state monies, you, the cities and counties, you have to be accountable and show us how we're working together. But if you're not going to use it properly, we're going to pull those funds away. That's what he said, you know, as far as accountability, putting everybody on notice, all the cities, that he wants accountability from the local jurisdictions. We need to partner up to make this successful. This housing issue is a big elephant, and it's going to take a long time to solve, but we got to start working yesterday. So, you know, he was very, very open about it. Let's see, what else? Today, I participated in a conference call about the General Assembly Host Committee meeting. That's it? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
I'm exhausted, just listening to their schedules. I attended the Burbank Human Relations Council meeting, and that was about it. It was thrilling.
That's all?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I attended the first Black History Month Assembly at John Burrows High School with Emily Gabe Letty. It was initiated and managed by Shaylan Beckton, a student there. I've been interviewed by two third graders and gave a Cub Scout troop a tour of the council chambers. I attended the Airport Noise Task Force meeting. We only have one left, and then we will come up with recommendations. I attended the Abilities Expo in downtown LA at the Convention Center. It's an expo for our disabled population. I attended the RISE event at George Isaiah Park on Saturday, and I attended the SCAG meeting in downtown LA. I was interested in the Arena Subcommittee meeting. that's all. Thank you. Now is the time for introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any items to introduce? Yes, Vice Mayor Frutos.
I wanted to piggyback on an item that Councilmember Talamontes brought up about the bus stops. I was wondering, Mr. City Manager, at Empire, and I'm not even going to try to pronounce the street, but it's right at the corner where...
Bell Prida.
Bell Prida. That's one of those tongue-tied feet. At that corner, there's two bus stops. They're in desperate need of a bench and a shade. That's a heavily trafficked area, and there's a lot of people that do take the bus, so I want to know where we at with that agenda item that I know Councilmember Talamontes a few months ago asked, but that really needs help.
There's a bench there now, today. As of today.
Oh, good, how about a shade?
And we're working on the other side.
Perfect.
On both sides, so no shade yet.
Okay, let's try to get a shade, because there's a lot of folks there, and I'm just thinking about the summer months. Thank you.
Were you throwing shade at those folks?
I'm bringing the hammer down. What shade?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, just to follow up on that, I'd like to have a survey about all of our, we as a city are responsible for our bus stops, not the bus companies, not Metro. We have the responsibility to provide the bus stops for the ridership. And the number one concern with ridership is that specific comment that was made, bus shelters and bus benches. Because if they're not provided, the majority of the people that took the survey said, we're not going to ride. So we have to really take a look at all the city stops, see what is provided, what can be provided, and what has to be put on the budget for future requests, because that's our responsibility as a city. Unless there's an answer right now, perfect, there is an answer. Thank you. Mr. Prescott?
Mayor Springer, members of the city council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Department. You may recall, recently, the council voted to extend an advertising contract for the bus shelters. So the bus shelters are paid for by the advertising companies in exchange for maintaining and advertising there. Those contracts, we have two contracts citywide, those expire in 2023. So our goal is to begin looking at where we need bus shelters and be prepared to renew those contracts and make sure that those advertisers place shelters at those locations.
So we have to wait?
I know it's three...
We have to wait three years before we even consider it?
No. We can't have a discussion on this.
I understand.
This is adding items, so...
Right.
But I want to let you know that's our plan.
Okay. So do you want that, an agenda item?
I want it agendas.
Okay.
Brought back, or as a reporter, whatever, you know, one step, two. Because obviously, we discussed, Councilmember Frutos brought up Bell Prida and Empire, which I've brought up to you about a month ago.
We'll bring it back as a first step.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have an agenda item for an update on the status of our Burbank Center Plan, the Civic Plaza, and where we are on that. Thank you.
I think we're right in the middle of it. Just kidding.
Thank you.
You know, the other thing, because it's such a prominent issue right now, hand sanitizers. Can we look at providing hand sanitizers at our city facilities for our employees? And if it becomes a public, if the public can reach into that? I don't know if it needs to come back as a one-step, two-step, but I think it's so important because of all the stuff that's happening around, and it's coming to America. You know, we're not, I mean, anyway, so if we could bring that back, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. I'm just thinking about protecting our employees.
Yes, Vice Mayor Frutos.
Agenda item, Mr. City Manager. What's going to be in place in the event of an epidemic here in the city of Burbank? I know we don't have a health officer, but what plans, what's in place for our city? Like to get a report on that. Thank you.
Okay. We now adjourn to Tuesday, March 3, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chamber, 275 East Olive Avenue, second floor, for a regular meeting.